Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission. Call the meeting to order, and Ms. Davis, have you determined that we have a quorum today?
Yes, we do.
First item of business we have is to approve the minutes as a special meeting on April 3rd, 2012. Are there any changes to the minutes as presented?
Make a motion we approve as submitted.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Mr. Robert, would you like to give us our first item of business today, please?
Sure, Chairman Cantrell. First item on the agenda is the property is addressed at 527 East Main Street. The applicant is Mr. Michael Westcott, and he's requesting to remove the asphalt shingle roof that's currently on his house, and he'd like to replace it with steel roofing material. I have a package, in my agenda package, I sent some pictures along with some photographs and a sample of the steel material that's going to be used on the roof. This property is located on the north side of East Main Street, midway between Highland Avenue and University Street, and according to the National Register of Historic Places inventory form that was prepared in 1984, the house was built in 1900 in the eclectic vernacular style of architecture. It has a classical porch, it's got a hip roof, and a central dormer. The house is one and a half stories and has clapboard as an exterior covering material. Like I mentioned earlier, the applicant would like to replace his existing asphalt shingles with a steel roofing system. You'll notice, you may have noticed in the pictures, and I described it in my package, that the roof line has a bell-style architectural, which means it's got a curved look at the very end of the, at the bottom of the roof as it flares out. Looks like it flares out the bottom. I've included several packages, or several photographs in your package that depict the house, and I can show these on the screen also. Even on the, on the main porch, you can see, it's hard to see, but the front porch that covers the steps, you can see where it flares out. And I think it's probably the main part of the house that, that the very bottoms of the roof, it does flare out. On the next photograph, you'll see that this may be an addition, but part of the house, the gables do not have a flare, they have a bell curve at the very bottom, so we wouldn't necessarily require them to recreate or create a new bell curve for the, for the shingles. But I think in keeping with the character of the house itself, and I talked to the building and codes director, who says that contractors can perform, can do this kind of work with the metal roofing, that they can do the bell curve that do, for the roof. And I think that would be a condition that the commission would like to place on the approval request. The applicant, I don't see in the audience right now, I thought he was supposed to be here, and if you have any questions, I can answer them as best I can.
Are there any questions of Mr. Lewis regarding this application?
Robert, do we know the color of the steel?
Not that I can recall, I don't know the color of it.
Robert, can you flash on the screen for the audience the profile of the proposed material?
Okay, that's a, that's a sample.
The material that they are suggesting, in my opinion, is more of a commercial design, and it's not a standing seam traditional kind of metal roofing. And I think it would be frankly very inappropriate for a house in the East Main Historic District. It's a commercial building material, and it has no place on a house. And I would have great hesitancy of ever seeing that enter into the East Main District. Whatever the color is.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would have to agree with our resident architect. This is not what I, the type of roof that I think would be appropriate considering all the work that they're doing on this house. It's just, it's, it's a commercial roof. It's designed for commercial buildings and barns and things of that nature. I don't know how successfully they're going to be able to bend that. I have my doubts that if, depending on what the gauge of this steel is, because when they bend it, they tend to crack the coating that is on the material, and once that coating is cracked, that will have rust coming out on it within, I've seen it happen within two years. So I'm, would have to agree that that's not what I was hoping for.
Are you, Jim, suggesting that altering the curvature would be detrimental? The curvature is an integral part of the design of that house, is that the bell-shaped roof?
I definitely think the bell shape should remain. I would hate to see them alter it just to get a roofing material they prefer on there. I just think that the profile, the design of the actual material is just inappropriate. It's too modern, it was something you'd see on a building today that's being erected, what we call a wrinkled tin shed in our business, a prefab building.
Steel roofs have, what, a 50-year life, is that typical? Would you, does, does anyone know?
They all vary by manufacturer and the finished material that, the painted finish that they apply on it, it just depends on what, any number of combinations or warranty periods are available.
Are there 50-year asphalt shingles available now? Somebody was telling me there's a new type of shingle up that might be a 50-year.
Well, again, roofing shingles, depending on how much you want to pay and all of that, it can go from, gosh, I don't know what the minimum is, but it can go up, you know, 30, 35, 40 years. But frankly, if you read the fine print, once you walk on it and you disturb the granules, you've already voided the warranty, so it's, it's a hard thing to know how to answer that for you. But I think frankly the asphalt shingles are more, more pleasing though inappropriate. They are accepted and are very commonly found, but if it was a true standing seam metal roof, I'd have less likelihood to have any concerns about it, except for the bell curve that I agree with Mr. Cross, that it's very hard to form. Now, if you did it with copper roof, you could, you could solder the seams in case there was any cracking or had the need to cut that to make it, make the curve. But with a galvanized steel or metal, whatever it's going to be, it's very hard, especially that high profile, if you notice at each end of the panel, Robert, if you could show that back on the screen again, it's so wide and so high to make that curve, if you look at, on the monitor there, it would be near impossible to crimp that, to get it to gently do that, in my opinion. I hear what the department said, but it's, it's just not appropriate for an historic home. It would look like a barn with a Victorian house underneath it.
When this house was built in 1900, what kind of shingles might it have had?
Well, in that period, it could have been slate, it could have been standing seam, it could have been individual embossed metal shingles, it could have been a number of things.
Shake, was, were they commonly used here?
Shake by that point is, was not being used very much at all. Typically, I would not even think to put one on a restoration of a house that period, a wood shake or a wood shingle on there. But a metal standing seam would be appropriate, it's just not that profile. I'm not opposed to the metal standing seam, it's just that profile.
I move, I guess I, if we're ready for a motion, I would move that we not necessarily reject it, but I think we need to talk to the owner. So to move to postpone for the next meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to defer the application until the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Cross and for Mr. Thompson as well. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Lewis, what is the second application, please?
Okay, the second application, the address is 138 Cherry Lane. The applicants are David and Mary Catherine Sevier. They're requesting to fill in the existing swimming pool on the side of the house, and then install a new swimming pool behind the house, replace an existing wooden fence with a wrought iron fence, and then they're going to add a roof to the front porch of the existing house. This property is located on the east side of Cherry Lane, about midway between East Main Street and East Lidle Street. The house was built in 1941 in a French style of architecture, and according to the owner of the house, has undergone several additions and alterations. The house is not located in either of the National Register districts of the, that the city has, either the Manny Avenue or the East Main, but it is in the local East Main Historic Zone. I'd like to say the property owners are planning several projects for this property, and let me see if I can pull this up on the screen to help start out the discussion. The property that I have, the picture I have on the screen now shows the side yard of the property, and this is the wooden fence that's existing. They're going to replace it with the wrought iron fence that's currently laying down in front of it. Behind the wooden fence is located a swimming pool area that I think that the owners have already filled in, and they're going to construct a new pool behind the house, which won't be visible from the, from the street. What we're primarily looking at is the replacement of the wooden privacy fence with the wrought iron fence. In another photograph that I have here, it's laying down, you may get a better idea of what it looks like. It looks, and if the applicant can come to the podium, I have a question I'd like to ask. I think that the fence is approximately six feet in height, is that, is that about the height of it?
That sounds close, yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair members.
And like I say, the location of it, is it going to be on just the one side of the house?
It would extend across the visible side and then connect to the garage on the north side of the property.
In addition to that, the applicants are wanting to, I haven't quite mastered this They're going to add a porch cover to the existing, I think it's, are you going to reconstruct the porch at all, or are you just going to cover it with the roof?
Well, there's, there's not a porch there now currently, so it would be a hip that would come out, extend from the, the larger main hip with a secondary that would cover the front porch, that's correct.
Well, is there a landing out in front of the door?
That's correct.
All right, now that, that porch is going to cover that?
Correct.
Okay. In your agenda materials, I've included some diagrams, and I have a board that also shows front elevation of the property of the house, and then some side elevations of the, of the porch area with the columns. I believe that the columns are going to be wooden, and the material's going to be wood?
Actually, we had had conversation regarding it being wood, and subsequent conversations with my contractor, we would like to at least consider the option of a fiberglass column for low carrying capacity and some maintenance down the road, but.
Okay. I'll be happy to answer any more questions that you might have, and the applicant certainly will also.
Any questions of Mr. Lewis or the applicant?
I guess, Mr. Chair, would it be of value to break up each of the various items into individual motions and discussions, just so we make sure we don't lose sight of the actual request?
Absolutely, and as Mr. Lewis stated at the first, I don't think that necessarily the action of a new pool is to be considered today, is that correct? Or because of it's not exposed, and just the fence and the covered porch addition? So. With regard to the, pardon me, with regard to the pool, Mother Nature really did a pretty good job of filling in the pool to begin with, and we just sort of helped her along with breaking up the decking around it and getting it in there to, it was a pretty massive hazard, as it was when we took possession of the home, but it, it had a collapsed wall and it did not hold water, so it was a, it was not salvageable. So yes, let's take the next two items individually then, for discussion.
But I just have a question, I guess. How long have you been in the house?
We have not taken possession.
Oh, you don't own it yet?
We're living next, we live at 134. We currently have both 134 and 138. We'll be moving from 134 to 138.
Did you just recently purchase it, or?
Just recently acquired it through an estate.
Okay.
I guess the first issue then is the fence?
Yes, sir.
In the photographs that were submitted, it appears that the fence is typically just a series of vertical pickets. However, it looks like because it's stacked, one on top and another, that there's some decorative scroll work. Where is the scroll work?
The ornamental scroll work is roughly eye-high. It was a fence that was built by Herndon &amp; Mary, which is a company we're probably all familiar with, if you've been around here any time. It was taken from a house on Woodmont Boulevard in Nashville, and purchased, and then moved to a house in East Nashville, and then we were able to acquire it. And it's roughly 42 linear feet of panels with gates, has their, there's a knobbed gate also within that stack of wrought iron.
Well, first, I applaud you for not putting a wood, a wood fence. Typically, we get wooden fences because people don't want to, they want the privacy and they can't, don't want people to see through. So I applaud you for doing that, because it will keep the, help the district appear more open. I guess my concern is, is the scroll work. I think the scroll work looks very, it has a sort of design, I don't know if you want to call it Spanish, Mexican, French, or whatever you want to call it, but I think it is a little bit fussy. Is that going to be throughout the whole 42 feet of length? Or is it just going to be every so often? How often will you see it?
Each panel has one decorative attachment. So with regard to, I believe there are six panels total.
I have to say, from my own personal preference in design, I think not having that scroll work would be making a nicer fence. I think they could potentially remove that myself, and I would prefer to see that, but I only speak for myself.
David, is that scroll work something that's easily dismantled, or is that a permanent part of each section?
It's a welded-on piece, so to take it off is beyond the scuff of my expertise, but, but I would say that I wouldn't want to do anything that would compromise the balance of the panels if taking it off destroys the, the panel itself, or makes it look messed up, for lack of a technical term. I think that, you know, we'd be better off to leave it as is.
Is it intended to replace the wooden fence that's in the picture?
That's correct.
Is that the idea?
The wooden fence is in pretty sad shape currently. How much of the fence would be exposed to the street? Well, it would be, it would run from the property line on the north boundary to the garage. So that would be roughly 30 feet, plus or minus five feet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
In looking at the, the front of the house, the photo of the front of the house, I see, I think I'm right, that that's a French provincial-style house, and when Mr. Thompson was talking about the style of the fence, and how, you know, it might be, it might be Spanish-looking, or it might be French-looking, and I don't have any problems with the decorative appearance on the fence, because I, in my mind, it goes with the French provincial house. That's my opinion.
Any other comments regarding the fence? I can just say I feel like that the, that the fence would be fine at that location, since it's replacing the other, but. We took it as a vast improvement over what was there.
Yeah, that's what I was just getting, saying. I make a motion to approve the fence.
We have a motion by Mr. Wade, is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any further discussion regarding this item? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Second item for discussion is the front porch addition.
I have a question for Mr. Sevier. What is the, what is the exterior of the home?
Brick.
Is it brick?
Painted brick.
It's hard to tell from this photograph, so it's painted brick. So in talking about the columns that are going to hold, hold up the porch roof, you mentioned in talking to your contractor that vinyl might be.
Well, fiberglass.
Fiberglass might be an option. Right off the bat, I'm thinking that, that doesn't sound good to me. That's it, with, with the brick, the painted brick, and the style of the home, and being in an historic district, you know, we're really trying to stay away from fiberglass and vinyl. And you also mentioned wood, right? That was the other.
Yeah, that is the more hassle-ridden material of the two.
Okay.
Well, you also mentioned something about the structural integrity, the fiberglass versus the wood, is that? Well, that was, yeah, that was information from, from our builder. He just preferred working with the structural fiberglass over the wood, for a lot of reasons. I mean, you have to insert a steel pole, you have to cut the column in two, you have to caulk the column, then you have maintenance issues with the column, I mean, versus a fiberglass pole that, much like hardy siding, looks like wood from a distance, can't tell till you knock on it. And what's, what's the height of the pole? I can not read the print. I have to refer to the. Okay. Please walk over there.
Eight-four.
Eight-four.
Mr. Chair, is, are the columns then, if they're fiberglass, they will not have the steel pipe column in the interior?
That is my understanding.
And if they're wood, they will?
That's correct. It eliminates the need for a jackhammer.
And the, the shape of the columns would be the same as if they were wood, they would be circular?
That's correct.
I don't have a copy of the guidelines for the district, I mean, Robert, are they on your computer by chance?
No.
When we make a substant, I mean, this is a pretty substantial addition, it's 28 feet wide, the porch, 28 feet wide, it really will alter the appearance of the house in a major way, and I think that's a bigger question than the, the appearance of the columns, or what the column material is made of. And so I guess I would just suggest that maybe we compare that to the guidelines.
If you look in, on the monitor, it's got an example of the, a close-up of the front of the house that's proposed, and in your package, you have a picture of the front of the house that will show, you can compare with the front porch or without the front porch.
What's the roof material?
Asphalt shingles.
On the existing?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I think the photograph shows the front, though, it has the rolled roofing before the shingles were put on.
That's correct.
Because waiting for the porch to be approved.
Waiting for, for the gavel to drop.
Okay.
Just to re, just to re-asphalt the roof, you don't need a approval commission.
Just curious, did you know about the historic district guidelines before you began your project?
Well, we knew we were going to be making, making major renovations on the inside as well. We knew there was a, in need of a roof, and then midway, and of course, we knew of the Historic Zoning Commission. We're not able to get on for the prior meeting through to some, you know, art stuff on our part, you know, getting drawings and things. So, so we've got 75% of the roof done, and we're holding on, on next steps.
Yeah, it just seems like you're pretty far along the way.
Well, either, it'll either have a hip on it, or it'll have shingles on it.
Yeah.
Which, what's not visible in that elevation, it really shows about a third of the house. To the left of that picture is another addition that was probably, you know, put on at some point, that has another hip, and it's in, on the, to the right of that is a large master bedroom addition that was a hip put on, we do not know when. It's, we, we think the house has been cobbled onto at least four or five times since 1941, but they're all hips, and the, the hip that's to the left, I did submit it, but it didn't make it to the packet, just a straight hip coming from the front would be in keeping with the, the context of the rest of the roof lines. It does make the front porch usable, getting some cover, I know, in others who, on our street, who have recently come before this, and the comment was made, you know, you need to have something on that porch to get you out of the elements. I believe that was your comment, as a matter of fact.
Linda, I'm going to pass around some photos that he submitted for y'all to take a look at.
What is, what is the proposed ceiling material underneath the porch, the new suggested porch? It's not shown on the rollings, just shows the joists, but it doesn't say what the ceiling material is.
I presume wood.
Okay. But it's not going to be plywood? Is it individual boards or planks?
Or, or a beadboard panel.
Okay, but it's not going to be a giant piece of plywood?
No.
I guess my opinion on the size of the roof, Gib, is, I don't have as much of a problem with that, since so many homes in the area have some pretty major wraparound porches. So in my own personal opinion, I, I don't see a major problem with the size of it, but like Jim said, I'm only one, one person.
Well, I was just asking, you know, how it compares to the guidelines.
We sort of went through this similar exercise on one of these, what I call modern houses that are not, i.e. not Victorian, when they wanted to change the windows, you know, to a more horizontal design, so that the interior shutters met at a mutton, and instead they were six over six and a more vertical cast. We had a similar discussion then about the modern, more modern houses might be reviewed differently because they're not the older homes, and so I myself, when I looked at this, I mean, it's, it's a good example of that period in French provincial design. It's a, it's a good classic example of that. I just didn't see, because it has gone through several modifications over the years, that adding a porch so dramatically changed it, and it can always be removed there if you wanted to. I didn't see it was that big a challenge. I'm frankly more concerned about the fiberglass columns over the wood. You could get a wood material that's going to be naturally disease-resistant, you know, mahogany, cypress, redwood, any number of things, especially if they're not going to be load-bearing, that you wouldn't have to worry about maintaining, then it's all about the prep and the material, I find, more than anything. But I'm not myself concerned about the addition, but I hear exactly what you're saying.
What direction does the house face?
West.
Well, I've had a considerable amount of experience with fiberglass, epoxies, so forth, in historic building restoration. And what I can tell you is that no true fiberglass will stand up under ultraviolet light. If you want to see an example of that, just go look at some swimming pool filters that have been exposed in about two years, and then they have got to have some attention to them. I don't think you'll be bettering yourself with fiberglass, in all honesty, especially if you've got a Western exposure. What is the finish like on these columns, do you know?
On the fiberglass columns?
Yes.
I have not touched one. They're typically, you have a primer on them, and then you paint to whatever color you want to.
you want to.
Yeah, they come in a base, base primer coat, and then you can put a finish, whatever kind of color you, you desire on it.
But the shapes can be, you know, the wood or the fiberglass can be the same. You can get identical shape to it. Personally, I don't have a problem with the use of the wood or the fiberglass on it, and, or the porch, but I think Paul makes a good point about the durability of the, of the fiberglass versus the wood.
One other question about the columns. Are they round cylinders, like the core of paper towels being just a completely round cylinder? Do they have the entasis where it actually gets smaller as it goes up?
The fiberglass or the wood, or both?
Both.
Yeah, my understanding is with the, with the wood columns, you buy a hollow column, you take it to someone who is skilled at cutting these columns into two equal pieces. That's something that, you know, you do in your backyard with a skill saw. And then you reassemble them around a steel post on site, caulk them, paint them. With the fiberglass column, my understanding is, it is like a paper towel, you know, but it has the, the grecian urn, for lack of a better term, that, but it is a hollow column.
Well, I know that you can buy wood columns, because I've installed them myself on projects where you can get half columns, and then you put them together.
Right.
But that seam will always, through age, will start to crack, and it's a caulking, maintenance item. Depending on how the house is constructed, you could always put the steel pipe in, lower one-piece wood columns over them, and then build the roof on top of it. So that's, that's not a problem. But my concern was not whether necessarily the material, but whether or not it, it was a true round cylinder, the same dimension all the way up and down.
No.
Or does it have the entasis, which is what it classically should have? If it's a round cylinder, it actually looks cheap and fake.
Like visually, it has indices.
Okay.
But internally, I presume it is cylindrical.
It may be. Yeah, okay.
Because the drawing that we have shows-
Shows the indices, but I want to make sure what you saw is what you got.
So was that response, it is tapered towards the top?
We're going to put a tapered column there.
Okay.
Whether it's wood or whatever.
Okay.
Not to get away from the columns, but as far as the porch, the new porch, I think it gives the existing house a good dimension, because that's really, presently, it's very flat-faced. And I think it's nice to give it some dimension. I think that's going to be a lot more welcoming.
We've always thought the home looked unfinished. I agree. They probably intended to have a porch there and just never got around to it.
Maybe.
We're just helping them out.
I agree. I think the porch is fine. I think the problem is the columns. I think if you're going to spend that type of money, you definitely need to go with wood. And just for the aesthetics of being in a historic zone, I think that's my opinion. I think the board is really leaning towards that as well. I just think, if you're going to spend that type of money, if you had wood columns, it really would help the aesthetic of the house.
Well, there's also the matter of, we've, we have, this commission through the years has steadfastly rejected vinyl and fiberglass. And here, we're looking at a, a situation where we're going to allow it to come in as a structural material, and as a finished material as well. And I think that that's not, not a precedent any of us really want to make, because then it will, other people will come in and want to do something a little bit, not, not in this manner, but still want to use that kind of material, and hold this up as an example of how this commission has allowed it before. And we want to, we're trying to keep the, not just the look of the, the historic district, but also the quality of construction. And that gets to be a major figure. It, a, a problem in some situations, it's not necessarily so with this, but it'll always get brought back up.
A less tasteful design may come before you.
Well said.
You're referring to an introduction of a new material?
Right.
Okay. Any other comments, questions of the staff or applicant? Is this a situation where you want to address them separately? The porch and then the column? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Why make a motion? We approve the design of the porch as it is, and not the material of the columns.
Okay. Is there a second to approve the porch? There's a second by Mr. Cross to approve the porch design, exclusive of the column material. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Now, would you like to address the material of the column?
Mr. Chair, I propose that we recommend wood, round columns with entasis, with the classical proportions, and capital and base details and everything about it, that it be correct, and that it be wood, and painted wood.
There's a second by Mr. Wade. Any other discussion regarding that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Chair and members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the Seviers for the-
Yes.
-major improvement into our historic area. Thank you so much.
Under other business, when we left the call meeting, there was the issue of the material that was going to be used, about the applicant or the color of the roof from last week? Or, no, uh-uh.
A special meeting.
From the call meeting. Did we ever get that information?
They haven't gotten back with me their decision yet.
Okay.
So whenever they do, I'll, I'll be sending out emails.
For Lewis, do you have anything else?
I don't have anything.
Uh, motions, without them?
I have a-
Okay.
I have something. Some of you may know the Manny Avenue renovation is going on by the city, where we're getting new sewers, and new sidewalks, and curbing, and parking. And they're now down to the corner of East College and North Manny. And one of the people has lost most of his brick sidewalk today. And remember when we had the problems with the city not contacting people on, on East Main Street and going ahead and tearing up the brick sidewalks? And if I recall correctly, they promised us that they would be a little more considerate about the historic district when they did have to take up sidewalks for major renovations. And I wonder if they are aware, if the city manager, or planner, or mayor are aware that some brick sidewalks have just been removed, that, I think that could be a problem. And I also, I mean, they've already taken down lots more trees than were necessary, which really has denuded that part of Manny Avenue. And it was probably unnecessary, so I want to be sure we're on top of being, you know, talking to the city about what's going to be done with those bricks, and can that sidewalk be replaced with brick, like we hoped would be an option.
Ms. Anderson, do you know the approximate location that you're referring to, what cross street it might be?
Yes, it's on the corner of Manny and East College.
It's on the northwest corner.
Northwest corner.
Northwest corner.
And do you know if it was, which you, was it a part of that project, or was it a, a utility company that was in there?
One of the big parts of the project is to make all the intersections and walkways handicap accessible, which was a major issue at that particular intersection, because they had three, four steps, I believe, Linda?
Yes.
Going into the sidewalks. So that was one of the major issues. Now, I've not seen how much of the, of the brick sidewalk that's been torn up, but that's why they're making such major changes.
And, and I understand that, that ramps are going to be installed, but I also know that that property owner has taken wonderful care of his sidewalk to make sure it was not dangerous, and any kind of benefit we can help him with. I think it's important that we find out what their plans are. Could you do that, Robert?
I can get with the engineering department. They're, they're the department that's doing most of the, all of the work there.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I know they've been in contact with that property owner about the bricks, and I just don't know where it's at right now.
Let me make one other suggestion. Since they're already past our, our block, and we've been, we've had experience with the contractor, both the, the general contractor and the electrical contractor, and with Mike Stacy, who's ramrodding the project from the engineering department for the city, I, I would strongly suggest that, that the property owner get with Mike Stacy and the, and the general contractor lead guy, and make a request that when they put the handicap section in, that they, they, that they can put as much of the red brick back as possible. Make the request to them. So the property owner needs to personally get involved and make that request with Mike Stacy. Because we made numerous requests on our intersection, and they were extremely helpful in accomplishing everything we asked of them.
Great, great. And I'm also wondering, because I know, because of taking those steps out, there are going to be some retaining walls. One has already been put up. And I'm, you know, I wonder if that's something that can be bricked, retaining walls.
I guess I would take that one step further. The city promised this commission that they would coordinate those kinds of things with us, and they haven't. I would like to see them come before this commission and tell us what they plan to do with that brick, instead of expecting the homeowner to deal with them. I think they should actually come to us and make sure this commission approves it, because that's what they promised us. And we changed our bylaws to reflect that, and the city has accepted that, and they haven't done it.
Well, I don't dislike the fact that the, that the city manager or his representative should come in front of us and let us know why they didn't contact us upfront. But I'm just saying that to expedite things, if the property owner made the request to the, the two folks that are heading this project, that they're pretty receptive to input.
I'm leaning with Mr. Thompson on this, that, that we did make that amendment, and there should be some, some degree of explanation.
I'll, I'll talk to the city engineer tomorrow and, and see what we can do about it, and, and get back with y'all. And if it, it means having a special meeting, or at the next meeting, because I'm not sure how long this project is going to be taking, so I don't know. But I'll, I'll look into it and get back with you.
Okay. It's moving pretty quickly. I mean, they've done a great job of, of doing a, you know, a block at a time, and, and getting that taken care of before, so that a lot of street wasn't blocked off. But I, I don't think, I don't think the homeowners should have to necessarily be the only person who deals with the engineering and the, and the water and sewer department. I think, I think we need to help them as much as we can.
Any other business? Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.